Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the February 5th, 2013 meeting of the Yukon City Council to order. If you would rise for the invocation by Pastor Mark Warseth from Resurrection Lutheran Church and remain standing for the flag salute, please.
Thank you. Father, tonight, I pray for all the people sitting up in front of me. I pray for our mayor, our city manager, assistant city manager, city staff, council. I pray for each of their lives, for their relationships, for their health, for their hobbies, for their joy. Just pray that you'd bless each one of them as individuals and that you'd bless them as they come together to work for a common purpose, to serve this city. I pray for the city, for the business that will be discussed tonight, for our school, for our businesses, and pray that your hand would be upon this community. We pray especially for rain and for our water supply. And we ask that, from this day on, that you would be the one who would guide us individually and as a city. Thank you, Father. Amen.
Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Gerba?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Hopeitz?
Here.
We have a couple of presentations and proclamations. Dr. Deason would meet me first, and then Lori Adams would meet me secondly. We'll first have the proclamation for the dental health, children's dental health, excuse me, and then earthquake awareness. This Stephen, we're going to have a proclamation that reads, "Whereas the future is to a large measure depended upon the good health of our children and the youth of the citizens of tomorrow, and whereas good health, physical and mental, can be achieved through good health habits and learning early. Therefore, I, John Albert, Mayor of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim February 2013 is Children's Dental Healthcare Month, given under my hand and seal this date, February 5th, 2013." Doctor, congratulations, and I know this is a program that's been going on for a long time. Do you mind sharing a little bit with our audience about the program?
I'd like to announce that the Yukon Dental Society is alive and well. We met today before we went to visit the first grade classes. This is the 39th year of our program. We started it in February of 1975. Through that time, we've probably seen over 22,000 young people. And the second thing that we have added is we've begun giving free dental care to children in need in this community. There are a lot of children that fall through the cracks, that don't have insurance, don't make enough or make too much to qualify for senior care, and that's the children we're trying to pick up with that. And through the last 10 years or so, we've probably provided a couple of hundred thousand dollars' worth of free dental work, and that includes orthodontics, general dentistry, oral surgery, and all. And I'm just so proud of our community of dentists here. A lot of areas say, "How do you guys do it?" And I just tell them, "We don't give them a choice." When they come into town, they're enlisted, and we say, "You're helping." We had 24 dentists today that went to the schools, and we will have, during the month of February, 18 dentists will be providing free dental exams, plus a lot of free dental care through the whole month of February. Yukon Helping Hands, Christine Sorrels, Donna, and Crystal help us coordinate the timing and making of appointments with that. So I'm just proud of our community of dentists, and thank you for the proclamation, Mayor.
Well, you haven't been to many meetings, have you?
No, I have not.
It's painful when I read, trust me. In this, when I opened it up, I thought it was War and Peace. Did you write this? Would you like to summarize it? Congratulations on the wonderful proclamation. Thank you for the earthquake awareness. We're thankful for your services. But I'd like to share this with everybody. But do you want to read it, or do you want to explain?
Explain.
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank Lori for putting this program together for the City of Yukon in emergency response for the city and for the nation. And I would like to thank the council and the mayor for this resolution also. Thank you very much. And I would like to point out that this is the largest emergency management exercise ever instituted in the United States of America. There'll be hundreds of thousands of people, more than 100,000, participate in this program at one time. It kicks off at 10:15. Lori, she's put together the program and did a very good job.
We have invited the public, and we've also invited Yukon Public Schools and the nursing homes. They'll be joining us at the EOC, at the Police Department, at 10 o'clock on Thursday, February 7th, to just kind of proclaim and declare earthquake awareness. We will have a live video that they'll watch and just kind of go over the drop, cover, and hold. All right. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you all very much. I appreciate that. The next portion of our agenda is the visitors' section, and I believe that there's a young lady here that would like to address the council tonight that has a baseball game at 7:30. Is it Marcy Andis? Yeah, we're... And then we'll have mobile meal. I just want... She's got a baseball game to get to, so...
Yes, ma'am. Now, you have three minutes, and this man has a timer. Do you? Good. I'll go fast.
You need... We need your name and your address.
My name is Marcy Andis. I live at 7401 North Richland Road in Yukon, just south of Wellesherne. And I was asked to come tonight, just to give a little background of my life. I grew up in the '60s in the San Fernando Valley, moved in the '70s to Northern California, and every year, we would take a trip from...
You pulled the mic down in front of you.
Northern California to Southern to drive down and see the grandparents and all that stuff. And it was really neat in California to drive through all these little towns that had these great roadside stands and fruit stands, and you had these towns that were famous for abel skevers and some for split pea soup. And it was just a wonderful little meandering, kind of like you would in, you know, eastern Oklahoma, you know, wonderful little towns. And one thing we always looked forward to as children was when we would get to see the giant propellers. And we would wait and wait. When is it coming? When is it coming? And miles off in the distance, you'd see these big, huge, just moving propellers lazily, just kind of... It was really fascinating as children, really fascinating. The one thing that was different about it than other places as we drove through, we'd start in the redwoods, and we'd end up, you know, down near Santa Barbara and back up. The only place that we went through where there was lack of life was in the wind farms. There was nothing there but giant steel, big propellers. They were fascinating and amazing. The lights at night were just miles, and it was really great as long as you were leaving. Nothing was ever there. I never remember seeing trees, plants, animals. California's full. I mean, there are wildlife that has some of the best fishing and hunting, bird watching. People do all kinds of outdoor sports. And in those areas, there's nothing. I mean, no towns, no houses, nothing. And so when I began to read in the paper, all this happening with the wind farms, my husband and I drove out, his family was from Geary, and we drove out to see them. And yeah, they are pretty amazing.
You have about a minute left.
They're all through there. And what we see, though, is along all those, there are people that are living in houses and things. I don't know, before I was born, what that land looked like before they put the wind farms. I don't know. I just know now, if you could utilize that land to grow things, or sports, or something, they'd be doing it. And they're not. It's just desolate, nothing but desolation. So when we think about allowing these around us, we've got to be careful, because we are one of the fastest-growing, fastest-appreciating communities in the entire nation, and that could stop right here. Because if people don't want to move here where we live, what good is this wonderful community that I've seen each one of you, over the 30 years I've lived here, move in and do fabulous things? I live just south of Pecan Grove, fabulous things. I'd like to see that continue, and I don't want to have to feel like I need to move before my property values go down and before people don't want to move here anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Joanne.
Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for allowing me to. I'm Joanne Oatmans. I live at 509 Mark Avenue here in Yukon. I am the director of the Yukon Mobile Meal Program that operates out of the Dell Robertson Center. We'd like to thank the City of Yukon, because they furnish us with that wonderful kitchen and the office space and the storage space to run our program. Our program is a community-based program that only serves within the city limits of Yukon. We serve the elderly, convalescing, and challenged physically individuals that need a noon-delivered meal. Last year, in 2012, we served a total of 255 days, 20,555 meals. That averaged out to be about 81 meals a day. There were times that we were up in the '90s and times we were down in the '60s. At the end of December, we had 87 individuals enrolled in the program. As of today, we have 95. The volunteers are the heart of our program. We recorded over 5,000 hours last year, and if you put a dollar amount to the number of hours that we recorded, it was at a value of over $44,000. So our volunteers actually put a base to the program every day of the week. We like to think of it as neighbor helping neighbor, and we appreciate the city so much and your support. Thank you for being a good neighbor. You all do have a report, and on the back, it's broken down month by month, if you're interested in the actual figures.
Any questions? Thank you so much for coming, and thank you so much for a great program and helping the people. I know that I get a lot of good reviews, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. McCarron.
Yeah. I was going to say, they need a big round of applause. That's a pretty special program, and I applaud you especially this evening as well. Thank you for coming.
Then let's don't cheat him and cut him short, so...
No, you bet.
Okay. At this time, we'll recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. The first item is 1A, that's the YMA consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of January 15, 2013; B) the payment of material claims in the amount of $2,717.80. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Hopeitz?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
The next item is 2A, and that's consider approving the expenditure of funds for Phase 1 of the street repair projects as identified on the street repair priority, sorry, tongue-twister list, in the amount not to exceed $1,250,000 to be paid from the 2012 Revenue Bonds Series A proceeds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a second, do...
Second.
And discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Hopeitz?
Yes.
Next item is 3A, and that's consider approving the expenditure of funds not to exceed $80,000 for the purchase of commercial front-end loading containers from Roll On/Roll Off USA from the 2010 Revenue Bonds. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I just refreshed my memory on the front-end loaders. I'm just... I read the blurb and everything on it.
Someone here that can talk to me?
Bill?
Bill, you want to talk about your front-end loading containers? There were... Well, there were a whole bunch of different... I thought the original ones were just the green cans and stuff. This front-end loading containers is another bunch of different sizes and everything.
This is preparation of getting our roll-off trucks that are due in the first part of March.
Okay. These are all still for the trucks, then, and that's the stuff that we're going to be loading them in, right? I had pictured it just as being the original smaller containers, but this is also for the larger ones.
Yeah, these are the larger containers, so we can start...
The commercial?
We have multiple containers now. We can swap those into a single container.
All right. Let's clear it up for me. Thank you.
So, the residential or commercial?
Commercial.
Okay. Yeah, commercial.
This is for our commercial council.
Okay. Any other discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Hopeitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Let's adjourn at this time from the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) the minutes of the regular meeting of January 15, 2013; B) the payment of material claims in the amount of $583,850.15. D... I'm sorry. C) designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade. D) an agreement with Yukon BMX to use Taylor Park BMX track from January 16, 2013 through January 16, 2014. E) an agreement with the Oklahoma Nitro Club to use Taylor Park Nitro track from January 16, 2013 through January 16, 2014. And F) setting the date for the next regular council meeting for February 19, 2013, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Hopeitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
The next item is 2, and that would be the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. And I believe that someone is here from the recycling committee. I got choked up. Jeannie, just thinking that you're going to address us tonight.
I hated to choke you up like that. I am Jeannie Vincent. I do work for the recycling committee. I guess I am the spokesman for the committee, because nobody else is here, so... We have six committee members. Carol Garner's our chair, Gary LaRue's vice chair, Beverly Kofed is our treasurer, and then we have Dennis Berenger, Rick Boland, and me. In 2012, we recycled 71.6 tons of cardboard and paper and 2.66 tons of aluminum. Now, we don't get the weights on the plastic and the steel and the tin and the glass, but we send a 20-yard roll-off to the recycle center with plastic in it nearly every week, so we run a lot of stuff through there. The recycling program was begun by a small group of citizens in 1993, so we are 20 years old this spring, and we're still being operated by volunteers. The center's open from 9:00 to noon on Saturday, with the exception of holidays, and check day in Yukon is a holiday. And if it's really bad weather, we don't go. Our volunteers and our program are so successful that our average vehicle count is now 200 per week, so we're growing beyond the capacity of the volunteers to maintain the service. The City of Yukon Sanitation Department and the Yukon Recycles are working together to offer citizens the convenience of having a place to go to recycle, six days a week, eight hours a day. So this is going to offer a lot of people more opportunity to be able to recycle. We anticipate this transition process to be taking place in the next couple of months. We appreciate so much the opportunity to work and serve the cities of... the citizens of Yukon for 20 years, and we look forward to working with the city, to and everyone that takes part in the recycling program, to make this process very easy and convenient, which we all know there's going to be bugs, but we'll have a good time working it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. The next item is 3, and that's consider approving the expenditure of funds for Phase 1 of street repair projects as identified on the street repair priority list in an amount not to exceed $1,250,000 to be paid from the 2012 Revenue Bonds Series A proceeds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Hopeitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
The next item is 4, and that's consider approving ordinance number 1286 and amending ordinance number 657, Appendix of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that 4.88 acres, more or less in the southeast quarter of Section 19, Township 12, north, range 5 west of the Indian Meridian, in the City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, according to the record plat thereof, be changed from C4 to C3 PUD and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
On this part of it, there was quite a bit of discussion, I guess, at the planning level in regard to signage and all of that. Does somebody want to speak to the fact that that's been resolved or not resolved, or...
Oh, sorry, Commissioner. The signage was discussed and was corrected and has been corrected as required by the planning commission and submitted to you for your review.
Okay. I did... I read through all of the paper, but it looked like an awful lot of pretty heavy discussion about the signs, and I wasn't sure that that was... It didn't appear to be fully resolved to me. I read through the material.
Well, there's three lots there, and the way the signage was being placed, they were concerned about the signage. But after they figured out it was only 200 square feet per sign, including sign area, then they weren't concerned as much. They were worried about a lot of signage.
Well, there is just one drive down through the center. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's three lots there.
Yeah. So the signage is going to appear where, then?
There'll be three signs that'll be on the Garth Brooks, one for the back lot and then for the other two lots. And on the signage, if I remember right, it was 200 square feet of total sign area for each sign.
Okay. But where will it... I mean, we're just going to have three glump together? I mean, the driveway's right...
No, it's going to be spread out. Actually, the engineers here, for, you know, you talked to... Actually, this is the zoning part of it, but, you know, we can discuss the PED. It's in the PED is where this is at.
Yeah. I didn't see where the signs were when I read through the material. Are they right there on the street itself, or are they down to the extent of a lot on the outside?
They're supposed to be spread out evenly across the lots. That's what you're asking.
That answered my question. Thank you, Mitchell.
Other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hopeitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 4A, consider the emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Hopeitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Hopeitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item 4B, consider approving the planned unit development of Garth Brooks Commercial Park Phase 4 development as recommended by the planning commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Hopeitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Item 5, consider approving specifications for a trailer-mounted spray-injection road repair machine for the street department and authorizing the purchasing agent to solicit bids. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question that maybe Arnold could answer for us. This is not a minor investment, and it's a piece of equipment that we... Although I've seen him operate in Oklahoma City and some of the larger communities, I don't believe that we in Yukon have ever owned one before. It's pretty advanced for minor street repairs. And I'm wondering what... It's got to be more cost-effective to operate with one than without one. If it weren't, why would we really be considering it? So can you put it in perspective for me, as opposed to having our normal street crew go out and make a minor repair? Approximately how long? And I know we don't have the final bids yet, but approximately, how long would it take for this piece of equipment to pay for itself based on efficiency?
We figure about two... Excuse me, I'm about to lose my voice, but about two years is what we figure the machine will pay for itself. But also, with the machine, it takes a clean rock, mixes it with an oil, so it sticks better in potholes, or if you've been out on Foreman Road, the shoulder of the road. We can put asphalt in there. Within a week to 10 days, it's beat back out. This machine will, when it makes the patch, it'll be there for years.
Because it's more dense? I know that was one of the comments in the specifications, that the patch is more dense than just a blacktop patch?
Yes. It's clean rock that's put in with the... It's a sticky oil base. You spray oil, then you spray oil and gravel mix, spray oil on top, and so it sticks in. It bonds to the asphalt that is there and the base.
Thank you.
All right. I just got a quick question, too. As it stands now, what do we do when we get, let's say, potholes, or we have some erosion on the side of the road? Is it basically just you get a truck out there with asphalt in the back and a couple guys with shovels, and you just kind of pound it in there?
Yes.
Okay. And that's why they really don't last?
Or we can take a backhoe, and we can dig, plumb down to the base, put a new base, and add asphalt, but it doesn't stay very long.
But basically, the adhesion seems to be one of the biggest issues.
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. McCarron? Other discussion?
I'm good.
Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Hopeitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item six is consider approving Resolution two thousand and thirteen dash one, a resolution demonstrating the City of Yukon's support for the designation of Route sixty-six as a U.S. bike route. Discuss, uh, sorry, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Have a question.
Yes.
Hopefully someone can answer this. Designating, uh, Route sixty-six as it runs through Yukan, Yukon as a bike route, uh, is that gonna at some point require us to separate one section, one, like a bike trail running parallel with Route sixty-six, or is that just, uh, giving cyclists, uh, the same courtesies, I guess, as if they were a vehicle driving down? In other words, they'd have the, the side of this, one lane of Route sixty-six as their free rein?
Mitchell?
Well, that's kind of a catch-twenty-two. Uh, no, actually, right now, what they're at, asking is designate as a route for bicyclists so they can actually put it into brochures and stuff and trade magazines to let them know that, come and ride historical sixty-six, ride your bike, basically. And, uh, there is a biking group that's asked for that support, but-
So, other than just naming it a bike route, uh, we're not gonna be required as a community to alter it in one way or another to the government?
With this, they're just requesting us to support them, and they're trying to get it at the federal level.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I've got one, too. Now, even though we don't really have much responsibility as far as anything else we have to do, isn't it true that there, there's a possibility of maybe getting some federal funds or maybe state funds as soon as you're part of this, let's say, bicycle network? Might, uh, state or federal funds be made available for, let, let's say, improvements? Mm-hmm. We're working on that Trails Grant Program, which actually may tie in to providing, uh, other means of transportation other than vehicle, and that would be part of that, if that's what you're asking. With the Trails Program, it could be walking, riding bikes, running, so forth like that, non-motorized type of, uh, vehicles. Thanks.
Other questions? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is seven, and that's consider approving Resolution two thousand and thirteen dash two, a resolution resolving that the City of Yukon can commit and meet the financial and legal obligations associated with the recep, of Water Smart Grant Financial Assistance has legal authority to enter into such an agreement to receive financial assistance, has reviewed and supports the application submitted, has the capacity to provide the amount of funding and/or in-kind contributions, and will work with the Bureau of Reclamation to meet established deadlines.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith? Yes.
Next item is eight, that's new business, no new business this evening. Next would be council discussion. Mr. McCarron?
Uh, I don't have a lot this evening. Uh, I certainly want to, uh, appreciate the mobile meals, folks, that are, that are here. Certainly, I looked at this sheet back here, uh, and, uh, certainly, your volunteers put in a great deal of time and effort, and, uh, certainly, my hand goes out to John Irwin if, uh, all the hours that he puts in. And, uh, I just think it's something that's really nice that you, that you guys do. Uh, I think that, uh, you know, Yukon, as Rick so frequently says, is a great place to be, and, uh, and tells us how good it is all of the time, and it's, it's hard for me, but I still agree that Yukon is a, is a good place to be. So with that, uh, that's it for me.
I assume that it's hard to agree with Rick, not that, it's not hard to say that Yukon's a great-
No, no, it's just hard to agree with Rick.
I just wanted to clarify, Conrad's here, and he seems to be writing, so.[1564.11]